Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our May 12 conference agenda. I guess we'll start again, right Matt?
Okay.
Keep going. Madam Clerk, would you kindly read the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilwoman Kukoviac-
Present.
Councilwoman Spango-
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney-
Present.
Council President Garino.
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you to my colleagues. Welcome, West Orange, we're here tonight to make some great presentations. Our first presentation up this morning is by Officer John Morello to talk about the 15th Annual Junior Police Academy.
This is our 15th year for our Junior Police Academy. It's hard to believe that 15 years ago this all started by soliciting donations throughout the town just to get kids clothing and to have people come and speak to the children. And it's grown over the years actually to a program to where as we receive a county grant on an annual basis of about $20,000 a year, we're able to service about 90 kids every single year. We also allow for multiple trips for the kids during the summer to where as we have trips to the Morris County Police Academy, we have trips to the Federal Air Marshals. Plus, once the academy's over, we allow for the kids also to have trips to Mountain Creek, movie theater, a couple of minor league baseball games, sometimes major league baseball games. We try to switch it up every year so that this way they get a different feel each year. Typically, of the 90 kids, it encompasses 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, we get a lot of repeats. And we typically, every single year, we end up getting a waiting list because it has become so popular. This is all, of course, only happens because of the cooperation of you guys and also with the county giving us the funding every single year. And hopefully, in years to come, it'll just keep on going and we can just keep on growing it.
Lieutenant, thank you very much, we appreciate you being here. Is there anything else the council or the township, or anybody else in the township, residents alike, can help to increase this program, to make it any better than what it is?
You know, we've always looked into possibly increasing the program. The only issue that we have is that it wouldn't be a problem getting the kids in and purchasing the extra uniforms. Where we end up running into problems is with the busing and the exorbitant amount that we are charged for busing the kids back and forth and actually getting tickets to go to these events.
John, can you talk about some of the activities and what they actually participate in?
During the week? Yeah, sure. Typically, we farm out everything. We try to get as many people from the outside to come in and discuss with our kids different areas of policing. We have the New Jersey State Police Teams Unit, which is their SWAT team, they come in. New Jersey State Police Aviation Unit usually lands a helicopter. We have K-9 units come in, we have FBI, Secret Service. We even have Pride, who used to come to the high school, but now we basically took them over. And it's basically prisoners that come out of the jails that talk to the kids about the bad decisions that they made. And hopefully, it won't be repeated by other people that listen to them.
Any of my other colleagues have any questions, Lieutenant Morello?
How do you get involved? How can someone contact you? Shouldn't you have a waiting list already?
Basically, we are on, yeah, we are on the westorange.org website. You can go there or actually go through each school to where the kids attend. We also look for kids that are either, that have gone through the academy, they're in college, or possibly seniors in high school that would like to assist, we take them with open arms.
Lieutenant Morello, thank you very much, thank you for your service you do for us. Have a great day, sir.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the certificate of recognition for the West Orange High School Winter Color Guard, and Councilwoman McCartney will make the presentation.
I have two certificates here. One is for the concert band, and it says on Tuesday, December 17th, four curricular bands of West Orange High School participated in the New Jersey School Music Association Region One Concert Band Festival at Verona High School. The 9th grade band, under the direction of Louis Kelly, the concert band, under the direction of Erin Legattic, received, I'm sorry, received ratings of bronze. Symphonic Winds, under the direction of Erin, received a rating of silver, and the Wind Ensemble, under the direction of Lou Kelly, received a rating of gold. The Wind Ensemble received two special awards for Best Woodwind Section and Best Percussion Section. Senior Oboe Player Matthew Talbot was recognized with an Outstanding Musicianship Award. I don't know if Matthew was here, is he here this evening? Okay. So, the Wind Ensemble has been chosen once again to represent Region One. This occurred at Rutgers University on May 3rd. So Lou, we're gonna ask you or Erin to talk about what happened on May 3rd, because we are very proud that you represent West Orange and at this prestigious event for the eighth consecutive year. One, that's one. The reason I started with that one is because I have been asking Lou to bring the marching band here for, I mean, we have a very successful marching band, and I have visions of Music Man, where the band bursts through the doors and come marching through. He said with, you know, close to how many students, 100?
It'd probably take about 20 minutes.
It would take about 20 minutes for the 150 or 180 students to come marching in. But they also are very successful under the direction of Lou. So tonight, I also have a special place in my heart to see this crew here, because my daughter Hannah was in the Winter Guard, and we can't remember what year it was, but they were also state champions during that year. So I'm very pleased this evening to greet the West Orange High School Winter Guard. They began their season in November. Members start by learning the basics of movement influenced by ballet and modern dance. In addition to dancing, each color guard member learns techniques for spinning equipment, which includes flags, sabers, and wooden rifles. The Winter Guard program is currently in its 12th season. The team has competed in the international color guard circuit for eight years. They have advanced to the final round of competition six times in the eight years they have competed in this world championship. Just last month, in April, the group traveled to Dayton, Ohio, to attend the Winter Guard International World Championship. Over 180 scholastic color guard teams competed at this world championship in three classes: Scholastic World, Scholastic Open, and Scholastic A Class. The West Orange Winter Guard competed in a tournament-style competition, participating in three rounds to advance to the finals. They placed 12th out of 23 color guards in this world championship scholarship world class, finishing with a score of 83.15. On April 25th, the Winter Guard traveled to South Brunswick High School and competed in the Mid-Atlantic Indoor Network Championships, winning the gold medal with a score of 91.4 in the Scholastic World Class. The group performed a choreographed five-minute production, which combined dance movements, spinning flags, and other equipment. The 2015 production entitled "Finding Your Voice" includes choreography set to Amelia Sandys, "Read All About It." All 20 members of the Winter Color Guard had individually choreographed roles in the show. So this evening, the township council wishes to congratulate the Winter Color Guard and wishes them continued success in your future endeavors. Erin, this goes to you too, you can bring up your team here, Josh, Lou. Oh, who else? And who else? Mr. Zinnar. Okay, then Mr. Zinnar, PJ. There you go. And then we'll bring the team up. Alright, now we need the whole Winter Guard up to take a picture.
Now we need the whole group of everyone. I moved the chairs out, out.
Just keep coming down. Your boss is talking.
Get the chairs out.
All the people in the back.
Alright ladies, start right here.
One time, no six.
Up against here, pile it in the back, Jerry. Get out from behind there.
Thank you.
Girls, come on back and do a second row. You gotta move those chairs out of there.
I want 12 copies.
Right, tighten up a little bit.
We got it, yeah? Cheese?
One, two, three.
Alright, go. Right here, come in here.
Why not? We are wrinkled in this place.
She just said, "No, thank you."
Typical teachers. Yes, I'm smiling. Your fault.
Thank you ladies. My conference, I know, I know.
You could tell if they want to leave.
I just wanna say something before they leave. I just wanna say one thing before they leave. I'm sorry? Oh. Yes.
So I did want to share, first of all, many thanks to the town council for continually recognizing the excellence that does happen at West Orange High School. We have got a great music department, and we're very proud of all the accomplishments of not only our band students, but especially our Winter Color Guard. I'll talk more towards the band event, the Win Ensemble. What happened is the four concert bands, you know, when you say West Orange Band, everybody kinda thinks of the marching band, which is a great group, obviously, you know, a group close to my heart. But we have over 200 students that meet every day as part of our curricular band programs that are divided up into four bands. Our 9th grade band, our concert band, our Symphonic Winds, and our Wind Ensemble, our Wind Ensemble being the top band, which is by audition only, and select students, and they perform a lot of difficult repertoire, and they do a lot more performances than the other groups. And this is the eighth year in a row they've been selected to this New Jersey State Gala Concert, which features 12 of the best bands from throughout the state, and we're happy to be representing them once again. So thank you very much for having us, and we're very proud to represent West Orange.
And we thank you too.
And this is Erin Legattic. Not only is she one of the band directors of the high school, but she's also the advisor for the Winter Guard, so she can help describe about the Winter Guard.
Hi, good evening, and thank you again for having us here, along with our band program and our four concert bands and our marching band. We also have a lot of extracurriculars, including our jazz bands and our pit orchestra, but also our fantastic color guards. This year, we were fortunate to march two color guards. This is our top world-class Winter Color Guard, and we also had a junior varsity team made up of mostly middle school students, which was a great endeavor for us this year. So this team is super dedicated, they work really hard, one of the hardest, if not the hardest working group on the campus of West Orange High School. And it is a huge honor for them to compete, not only on the state level, being the top color guard in the state of New Jersey, but also on the national level. And 12th place on a national level, it doesn't sound like a big deal, but it's a huge deal. It's absolutely a huge deal. And this event that we attended in Dayton, Ohio, featured top color guards from not only the US, but internationally. And to represent West Orange on the international stage is such an honor, so thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I would just like to say to the faculty of the West Orange High School, thank you. And the students are very fortunate to have such dedicated professionals to really enlighten your lives and to make them such a great organization and something that the township, an organization the township is very, very proud of, and we support you. And we wish you continued success in your lives, both personally and professionally. And remember, you always have a home here in West Orange, and to the parents. You deserve a lot of credit too, for the time and effort you put out. And we wish you continued happiness with your children, because they are a shining star to the township. And thanks to you all again, and good luck, and many more awards and championships. Thank you for being here tonight. Not that I'm throwing you out, because I'm not, but you don't have to stay. If you'd like to see, if you'd like to stay and see the wheels of government turn, you're more than welcome to. If not, we thank you very much, and we hope you have a great year and a great summer.
Thank you, thank you very much, good to see you.
So that was a great presentation for our high school students and for their parents and our faculty, something we're very proud of. Now we have council liaison announcements, Councilman Kukoviac.
No announcements.
Okay. Councilwoman Spango.
Yes, let me just get my notes here. We had a meeting last night for the rent-a-house. Not much was discussed, the only major issue was, at our last meeting, we had approved a lending house for the refinance that we're using, and they came back and told us, I do have it here somewhere, came back and told us that they would not be able to give us the full amount that we needed to make the capital improvements. So what we did was, we voted to go to a different lender, so we're in the process of that. Other than that, nothing else.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, Councilman Cirillo.
Nothing to report, Council President, thank you.
You're very welcome. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. So, everything is about the street fair. The street fair is on June 6th, I see Megan is here, but really, every meeting, even 7:30 this morning, the Chamber is the sponsor of the street fair, and it's just really exciting of all the things that are planned for the day. Thomas Edison, National Historic Park will have free tours from 11 through 5. Car show, there'll be a classic car show. Between, Megan, you can give us the specifics on the car show. There will be over, it's probably more than this now, but there will be over 100 crafters, artists, and new merchandise vendors. We'll have a Touch a Truck feature in that CVS parking lot, where children and families can climb on municipal vehicles, or police cars, tow trucks, lots of fire engines, ambulance. Toward the end of the evening, there is a Beer Garden and Food Court, new brews featured at the Beer Garden on Alden Street, that's from 11 to 9. And the Music Festival, the concert will begin at 6:00 PM. That will be planned on the lawn at the National Historic Park, the Edison National Historic Park, that will wrap up all of our day's activities. It is free to attend, and I know Megan has more information on this, so might be a nice segue.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If it's alright, I would like to have our executive director, Megan Brill, do my council liaison for the Downtown Alliance. So, Ms. Brill, would you please?
The deadline for sponsorship of the street fair is approaching, but we have a tentative flyer that has a bunch of sponsors. Victor, here, would you take one of each, I'll put them in order. We're also asking that anyone that wants to pick up a $150 sign that will be displayed at the Touch a Truck. Councilwoman McCartney and Jerry Garino have already agreed, as well as Assemblyman McKeon, Council Assemblywoman-
Congressman.
J.C., we got Cody, we got Booker, we got, you know-
Freeland Heisen.
Freeland Heisen's coming, right, he's actually coming, plus he's donating a sign. So we're working feverishly on all of that, and the footprint is Babcock Place, Two Park Avenue, and then it picks up again on Mount Pleasant Avenue. So we encourage, and I can accept a check tonight if you're so willing. The other thing from the Downtown Alliance, and I think Victor was at the meeting, and I know Isabel and Rodolfo were here a couple of weeks ago talking about the Latino Business Committee, and they asked me to come, and I was there with them on Friday night, and they had about 30 people in the room, folks that I didn't know, people from our community, business owners, residents, all of Latino descent, very excited about working together with the Downtown Alliance and the rest of West Orange. So they're planning Latino Night up at Ospac, and doing all kinds of stuff that we hopefully will partner with them, and both sides of Main Street will be better because of it. I think that that's it. You have the forms, anybody have any questions about? You can see the top of the flyer. We have Regal Bank, the Edison Museum, MetLife Auto and Home, Trank de Pasquale TD, PSENG, Leap Filter, Vanderhoof Bussing, they are our Beer Garden sponsor this year. We have Cabinets Direct, which is located right near here, maybe into Orange, and Evco Mechanical is our newest sponsor today. So we are working feverishly, and I'm hoping that the sponsorship part of the street fair will end any day now, or this week. That's it.
Megan, two things, how can people get more information about this? And you could mention Slide the City?
Slide the City, yes. Well, Slide the City is a thousand-foot slip-and-slide that will be placed on Mount Pleasant Avenue. It will start at just below the 280 Bridge and go exactly 977 feet. And there's a 77-foot catch basin pool that you land into, and the water gets cycled out of that pool back up to the top, and you can slide all day long for $50. You can slide three times for $25, or slide once, probably maybe, for $15. You can also bring a water gun and squirt people as they're sliding down and pummel them with, you know, squirt balls and stuff, so should be a really great day. We actually have a shuttle that'll pick you up from White Street that will take you to the street fair. We also have a car show that will start at Park Avenue that'll bring you down to Lakeside. So we're hoping that people will come and spend the entire day with us. At night, we're having a concert featuring the Grip Weeds, which is our rock and roll band, and we're gonna have tons of stuff to sell and buy and eat and play and all kinds of good stuff, so.
And there's also free admission to the Edison National Park that day, correct?
Yes, yes. And actually, the museum is free, they pull out a whole lot of stuff that you don't see during the year. So, it's gonna be a great day.
So we have westorange.org, I know that you're linked to that. What would be the Downtown Alliance website?
DowntownWO.com is our new website. So you can reach me at mbrill@downtownwo.com. So everything is out there, it's on the email news list. We're sending out another push to all our business owners to try to get, we have 70 vendors registered and paid for. We had 45 last year, so we had 70, and we're still three weeks out. So what's really great about the street fair is our ability to be able to meet, I think we wouldn't have met Evco Mechanical and worked with Cabinets Direct, and even the smaller businesses, single-owned, you know, businesses throughout the township that we get to meet and partner with and bring them, you know, downtown, and the rest of our community gets to meet them that day, which is really the whole point of us running the street fair, instead of having some outside company that doesn't ever build a relationship with anyone. So it should be really good.
Great job Downtown Alliance.
Thank you, thank you.
Any of my colleagues have questions, or?
Council President, I have to make a comment that, no, just about Evco, and Megan said that we picked this up today, and at our last council meeting, we talked about the West Orange Environmental Commission making this circuitry, we're trying to do a community build to make solar light-
Light box.
Lights, flipbots that the UN would designate a country that has been devastated by storm, and we would supply the lighting. Though I had the manual for the schematics to do this, it really didn't make sense to me, and here we have this unassuming company, international company on Standish Avenue, they've been there for 10 years, and I, mechanical engineers, that's what I need. And we called and met with them, they have stepped up, they became one of the sponsors, and they're going to provide the street lighting to the Beer Garden and the concert, and create the circuits that we need to do this community build. So it was really one of the most productive meetings I've been to in a very long time.
That's what's really amazing, when right at the same time that I was thinking about how we needed to light the Beer Garden and Alden Street, because it's gonna be 9 o'clock by the time the concert's over, I ended up at a meeting with you and Mike Brick and the leader of light people, and I thought, well, if we have to buy lighting anyway, let's help get the leader of light light, so everyone will be able to see what actual light looks like through a plastic bottle, which is gonna be really amazing.
Should be fun.
Yes, yes. VolunteerGenius.com, yes. Actually, volunteer is a very important part. We actually have two sets of volunteers. We have leading up to the event, so we have signs that need to get built, things that need to be put together, so it's more of a labor-intensive volunteer. The day before the street fair, on June 5th, we have volunteer slots from 11 to 3 and 3 to 7, where we're gonna be actually building all the tents that need to get built. So there'll be an email that goes out, and you can sign up for anything that you want. And then there's probably 60 time spots for the actual street fair. That's not actually 60 people, but like Karen volunteered for Touch a Truck, or for the kids' rides. So you worked 11 to 1, you did your 1 to 3 in the residence part, and then you ended up staying in the Beer Garden, so that's great. So you'll see that they'll be all-
Or Slide the City.
They'll be all areas, she was the bouncer for the Beer Garden. There'll be a lot of areas where people can help, and we really wanted to be a community event, so if we get 60 volunteers, that'd be great.
So how do people get, that's also on that website?
DowntownWO.com.
DowntownWO. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Okay. Alrighty. We're going to our relay, right? Sorry, I was just gonna mention that. Thank you, Councilwoman. Just to remember that this Friday is our annual Relay for Life cancer research and fundraiser up at West Orange High School. There's still time to apply, you can apply at the website, www-relayforlife.com/WO. There's still time to sign up, create teams. Registration is Friday night, starting at 6 o'clock at the football field at the high school, so we'll be there, and we hope we'll see you there. It's a great event, great to get involved with. It's always been a success for the township, the high school students put a lot of effort into it, our fire department, thank you Chief Cirillo, your group of men have always been tremendous for the Relay for Life, and we thank them and hope to see them again. So anybody interested, it's www-relayforlife.com/WO, and we look forward to seeing you there Friday night. Registration, 6 o'clock at the football field at the high school. Thank you, Councilwoman, for reminding about that. Anyone else have any comments before we go into our general meeting? Okay. Alright. Should I start? Okay. Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our May 12th Township Council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you kindly read the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014.
Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our May 12th Township Council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you kindly read the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilman Cirillo.
President.
Councilman Krokovia.
Present.
Councilwoman Spango.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Council President Guarino.
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and my council colleagues. I'd like to open a meeting up to general comment to the public. Anyone wishing to make a comment to the town council? Please raise your hand. Yes, Mrs. Morelli?
Good evening. Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. I have a couple of issues that I want to talk about tonight. First one is, I'm not sure of when, but about two years ago, the administration was implementing a program whereby compensation to certain directors would be made based on job performance. In the private sector, this is called managing by objectives, or MBO. Questions that I have regarding this matter is, was the program actually ever implemented? Is it currently in the process used to determine salary compensation? If it is, are the evaluation documents public record? If not, why not? And given that this program is not being used, should we have, should we, the taxpayers, assume that the old process whereby the max for the title would be raised, people in the position would be automatically raised to that max? I would assume whether they perform the job properly, excellently, poorly, or not be raised if it was not acceptable performance. I think those are all the questions I have there. Okay. The second issue is, yesterday at the senior luncheon at Mayfair Farms, and the poor mayor got an earful from a lot of the seniors. One critical issue that has surfaced and is growing as a concern to seniors whereby transportation is not provided for them to go out of town for their doctors, certain tests, or whatever medical problems or facilities they need to get to. They have no means of transportation. Currently, I think the only time they will go out of town, I think, is at the, to the ambulatory center for dialysis and chemo. Now, it's become a hardship for an increasing number of seniors who don't have transportation and who have doctors that are not in town. The seniors feel that if the township can provide a jitney bus for people going to work free of charge, why not, and they go to South Orange, why not transport the seniors to their doctors? We'd have to determine a limit. I mean, you couldn't take them out of state or whatever, but maybe the two, the contiguous towns, or whatever. But this is a growing problem, and they have no way of getting there. The mayor listened to them. I don't know whether he's gonna take any action or not. But I sincerely hope that you all will take action. One thing I'd like to know you do is call the other townships and find out what they do. I haven't done any research. That's your job. You promised your constituents you were gonna work on their behalf. This is a really good project for you to take up. As far as free rides on the jitney, and Mr. Guarino, you were very vocal that these people are taxpayers and that they are entitled to this bus ride or jitney ride or whatever. Well, as an example, I'm in this town. I paid taxes for 45 years since my kids have been out of school in the 1970s. I paid before they went to school, while they were in school, and I'm still paying taxes now. So, I contribute. You owe me something. Fortunately, I don't need the service. I hope to God I never do, never used it. But there are those people who really need it desperately. I strongly suggest you look into doing something about this. Thank you. Oh, one other thing. In reading the agenda for tonight, I read for the resolutions, and the Montclair YMCA or YMCA is going to use the township pool. I don't see anything in there on what we're going to charge them. While I read about the liabilities, legal, this, that, and whatever, there's no mention unless I missed it.
They're in there, yes.
They're in there.
It's in there.
It's in there? Then I missed it.
We do this every year. Shared service.
Before you, Mrs. Morelli, is anyone from the administration would like to address Mrs. Morelli's question about compensation on directors?
Directors are appointed by the mayor, and compensation is basically set by the mayor. They are evaluated, not, there are no official evaluations made each and every year. If a director has applied to or asked for a raise, that's been considered during our budget sessions between the administration and the mayor, and that's when the decision is actually made. But there is no official evaluations that are made.
So, I might understand that the, any compensation, any increases, doesn't have to be on job performance. It's at the will of the mayor because he appoints them?
No. What I said was, he's the one who evaluates them. So.
And there's no documented evaluation anywhere?
No. There's no documented evaluation. And what happens is, is if there's, if a director or someone puts in for a raise, it's evaluated by the mayor and the administration when we're doing our budget. And it's decided on whether that raise stays in there or doesn't.
So, if I work for the town and I feel I'm worth $100,000 increase, I tell the mayor, I want that raise? Or if I don't say anything?
You're not getting that raise.
If I don't say anything, I will never get a raise? That doesn't make sense.
Well, nine, every, every time that that is done and we present that in our budget, that budget is then presented to the council, and then the council has an opportunity to approve it or disapprove it. So, it's not just the mayor. The mayor makes the recommendation, but the approval comes from the council.
You know, this dialogue, I know, is not permitted. I appreciate what you're doing. But how can you vote on somebody's performance or to give them a raise if you don't know what they do or what they've accomplished? That would never happen in the real world or in the private sector. I think I should've worked for this town. I would've been a hell of a lot better off. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Morelli.
Anyone, yes, Ms. Clemmison.
Good evening. Mary O. Clemmison, Fort Cherrywood Circle in West Orange. I have a comment, a series of comments and questions about the budget for this year. And I'm sorry I missed the last month or so worth of meetings, but it wasn't that I wasn't following along. All right. First comment would be that there is a new user-friendly budget mandated by the state, and it must be made available in 2015 to New Jersey municipalities. So, one question I have is, will that be available this year in West Orange? And will it be put on the website? Second question, this is to the administration. Over the next few years, what would be the administration's best guess about the projected percentage change in taxes required to meet all expected revenues, expected expenses, and capital outlays? Another way of asking that would be to say, do you see any structural imbalance forming over the next few years? Third question, what are the most likely items that may pop up in the current operating year for spending that is not currently reflected in this year's budget? Fourth is a comment. For building a budget, I certainly, coming from the private sector, would prefer to see zero-based budgeting. I know it's a lot to ask for, you know, to do it in a whole-scale way. But I would really like to see it initiated for certain departments that now that I have been in the budget review process for the last several years and listened to the comments of the various department heads and the questions and answers to the town council members, there, it's kind of obvious to me that there are certain departments that are either under review, they're being restructured, or the answers that are provided about the spending levels and where the money goes is not exactly clear. In other words, it needs a little bit of a tightening up, a little cleanup, a little revamp. So, I would love to see a zero-based budgeting approach used for those types of departments. Planning comes to mind because the current head is no longer with us. There's new people, there are new people coming in. It's a great time to kind of start from scratch. The other areas that appear to me to need a little help, parks and recreation, parking, maintenance, fuel, central, and automotive. This is because, in my understanding of it and hearing the answers to the questions, it seemed that either the systems or the expense controls were not exactly under tight wrap. My fifth comment, no school items should be included in the muni-budget. I think that's a practical matter. I know it's done here. It's not done in Princeton. It's not done in other municipalities. Another policy issue would be from a matter of acceptable policy. Salary increases, for whatever reason, I think, should be limited to no more than 2% a year. Another item for policy is, it appears that we do need to create a policy about the level of annual surplus that's created and then how that's used during the intervening year. Another thing I thought of, sometime in the next, hopefully, six to 12 months, I'd like to reach out to certain citizens that are active in budget matters in Livingston and Montclair. And the reason I want to do that is because I want to share observations and ask what they do and make this whole review process from a citizen's standpoint a lot faster. And then I would share the observations I get with you. With the permission of the council president, I would love to include these comments in the minutes. That's up to him to decide if that's okay. Another question I have is, on these resolutions, I think I asked before, but it would be really helpful to see a dollar amount for the revenue or expense impact of each item. So, it makes it a lot easier to see what's going on. As a citizen, I was not able to pull up attachments that, I mean, I saw the attachments. I saw what was available on the website for the meeting tonight, but I did not see the dollar value of a lease or a contract or whatever. And I just think it'd be nice to have that in there. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clemmison. Anyone else wishing to speak to the township council?
Good evening, sir. Thank you for being here tonight. Hi, Anthony Pagliisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. I just want to follow up a comment from Ms. Morelli. The county does have a special transportation program that is available to seniors. The limitations on our program is, we take anyone from Essex County, anywhere in Essex County, we stop at the border. So, if your doctor is in Morris County, we don't take you there. But obviously, if you're a West Orange resident and you have your doctors in Bloomfield, I mean, we can accommodate you. The number there is 973-618-1280. And they do have, you can't just call that day for the ride. You have to call a few days in advance, and then they'll schedule you. But like I said, that's a special transportation program. I hope that helps out.
Anthony, please repeat that number.
Hold on. I just lost it there. Hold on.
973.
Thank you.
And then I just want to bring everyone up to date on a couple of other things that were going on. Last Saturday, we had our Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. That's a mouthful. We did have a record number of participants. We had 1,711. So, that was a good thing to see. Next Saturday, the 16th, is our Computer and Electronics Recycling Day, and that's at the old hospital center site on Fairview Avenue in Cedar Grove. That's from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And the basic rule is, if it runs on electricity, it can be recycled at that event. And then finally, on May 30th, is our 13th Annual Open House at Turtleback Zoo. It starts at 10:00, continues until 2:00. And then admission to the zoo is free all day.
When is that?
Excuse me?
When is that? I'm sorry.
Saturday, May 30th. So, admission to Turtleback Zoo is free all day. So, if you do come after the event, you still get free admission there. And that's just our event where we highlight the activities and the responsibilities of all our departments and agencies. It's a very nice day. Hope to see everybody there. Thank you very much.
Anthony, you were kind enough to send us an email about a road closure in East Hanover at the Environmental Center.
Yes.
That may impact residents in that.
Yes. Even though we're in West Orange, if you go up the road to where our environmental center is, on Eagle Rock Avenue, a little short drive past there, there's a bridge that's gonna be closed beginning May 18th, I believe. Essex County is partners with Morris County on that project. Morris County is overseeing it. It's a total bridge reconstruction. So, that bridge will be closed probably until Labor Day for reconstruction. So, I don't know if it's gonna have any impact for folks down here, but we just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Pagliisi? Mr. Cirillo? Councilman Cirillo?
Yes, thank you. Council President, thank you for that information on the Essex County Bus Service for seniors.
Yes.
I've actually referred some seniors to that service. And I know that you also do have retrofitted vans. I'm sorry. That you also have some retrofitted vans, should that be the case. So, so long as seniors book in advance. I think there's one van that's retrofitted.
I don't understand what you mean by retrofitted.
Well, sometimes.
For wheelchairs?
Wheelchairs accessible.
Yes. Actually, most of our buses are wheelchair-accessible with the lifts, and they also are kneeling buses. So, if you have trouble stepping up, the bus can kneel for you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that because in one instance where I referred somebody to the county service, there was a need for a retrofitted or wheelchair-accessible vehicle, and that was provided. So, I'm glad that you're sharing that with the community as an option.
Anthony, on that service, is it a central location or they come out to the senior housing?
The buses? They'll pick you up at the curb of your home.
Excellent. Thank you.
It's great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pagliisi. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard? If not, I close public comment, and I open the floor to my council colleagues. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes. I was gonna, Council President, I was gonna say something about evaluations. And there is really like no, I mean, I guess, best practices. But the rule on evaluations is, you can have written evaluations, and I think that's what Ms. Morelli was referencing, written evaluations. And there's also verbal evaluations and oral evaluations. Or as a business owner, business owners, you go through that process.
Just hope they show up.
Right, right. But just so that, the point that I want to make is that just because there's not a written evaluation in paper, it doesn't mean that there's an evaluation process to assess whether or not someone merits an increase. And from the sound of, you know, what you described in terms of what process is internally in place, there is a system that the mayor has implemented. If somebody requests an increase in pay, you know, it would be assessed. Whether there's not an annual evaluation, I mean, there is, there must be some sort of documentation in there that shows, should there have been discipline for, you know, for deficient work. So, point is, is that it sounds like there already is a process for evaluation, but it's not really what Ms. Morelli was referencing, which was a written or an annual evaluation process. And one thing I want to say about, I'm not a big fan of annual evaluations And one thing I want to say about, I'm not a big fan of annual evaluations because they can be very subjective. You inherit an employee who might have been the best employee to someone, but, you know, when you come in and you inherit that employee, you may find that there may be some faults or vice versa. You may have somebody that has a written evaluation that's defective, turns out to be one of the best employees on your team. So I just want to make that note on that conversation, but it's true. You know, you need to have a sense of figuring out and waiting and assessing a metric system to extend any type of monies. The other issue, Ms. Clemmison, thank you. Those are very, very good questions. You kind of enlightened us on, you know, how to continue looking at a budget from different perspectives. And if there's anything we can do to assist you in reaching out to the municipalities or references or anything of that sort to help you or ease that connection, just let us know. And I'm looking forward to listening to some of the answers of those questions. I'm sure Mr. Gross or Mr. Sayers took some notes, and I'm interested in hearing the answers in terms of spending issues that may come up or what kind of impact, what kind of impact capital expenses have. Salary increases should be limited. You know, sometimes our hands are tied based on union obligations, et cetera. So I'm looking forward to that discussion. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Morelli, thanks very much for your comments, your variety of comments. Just to answer your question directly, the contract for the Montclair YMCA for use of the pool is $65 an hour, and that is the same price as it was last year. Just to follow up on your earlier comments about compensation and performance evaluation, I recall, I can't remember whether it was three or four years ago, but the administration had presented to the council three contracts for, at the time, people who were directors. They were moved to, I think, assistant directors and were put under one-year contracts. And then we never heard anything more back from them. I'm sure the contracts expired and I cannot recall the contracts or anything about them being brought back to the council after that. You make very good points about a variety of issues about how the council can evaluate performance without any written, without any written performance documents. I know what I typically have to do is do my own research or at least reflect my own experience with employees when it comes up during the budget discussions. Ms. Clemmison didn't say so, but she's a member of the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, and I think one of the things the council can do is to make sure that their appointees on the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee are regular participants in the process. And now's a good time for all of us on the council to check, to make sure that if their current appointees aren't contributing, for whatever reason, that we get people who can assist Ms. Clemmison. And I also appreciate a lot of your, the points that you make. They affect thoughtfulness and also the many hours you have spent over the last few years with the budget. So I do value those. I ask, in addition to putting your comments in the minutes, that you email the council and perhaps the business administrator with those because they were very significant but very difficult to follow in real time, the questions you raised. And I would look forward to hearing from the administration, perhaps at the next council meeting, some of their thoughts about this. And hopefully, you'll be there to perhaps engage in a dialogue. That's all, Council.
Thank you, Council. Councilwoman Spango?
Thank you, Council President. Mrs. Morelli, I do remember what Council Kukoviac just said, that I believe under, when Mayor Perici took office, he did make the directors a one-year contract, and it was my understanding that they would be evaluated year to year. And I think basically what you're trying to say more is there needs to be some accountability. But a lot of what we approve in the budget is contractual. And there have been times when, I know myself I've labored over it, where people have asked for raises and I have voted no for them. I wouldn't give it to them. You know, contractual, it's out of our hands. We have to do that. I'm not always happy about that, but that's in their contract. But I do agree with you too. There should be some accountability. It just shouldn't be an assumed thing that anybody's entitled to that. As far as what you said for the transportation for seniors, I have been an advocate for the jitney service. I did say that I think it helps our real estate values. But I think you made a phenomenal point. If we can provide jitney service to people in South Orange, then maybe we need to look into, to see if we can do something for seniors here. They're probably, I'm assuming, we would have to set up some kind of parameters as to how far they would take them, but that's certainly a point well taken, in my opinion. I don't know if you heard, Mr. Paglisi, you were talking to Mr. Lepore, but Anthony Paglisi said that the county does have a transportation service. He gave us the phone number, and they will pick you up right curbside at your house. So I'm not saying that that alleviates what your suggestion was, but until maybe we could see if something can be done in town, that might be a little relief to people that do need transportation right now. So I took down the information. If you want, I'll give it to you. Okay?
Councilwoman Wapert?
I'm sorry that I did not attend the, was not able to attend the senior luncheon yesterday. I always do attend. I did have conflict in schedule. I'm sure I would have heard this, but I'm pleased that Anthony was here to give us this information, that the county does provide the service for our seniors, and the fact that they come curbside is pretty, very convenient. And I thought Marielle was the Budget Advisory Committee.
Yeah, she is.
Me too.
She is the Budget Advisory Committee. She has been to our budget hearings and to so many of our meetings. And, you know, just read this. I do look forward, these are mostly questions for John to answer, things that we have always looked at, best practices and that zero-based budget. I know that's what the Board of Ed did this year. And user-friendly budgets. John? You can answer those questions, all of those questions.
I'll give them, Ms. Jay.
No, you didn't.
Anything else, Councilman?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Morelli, yes, I am a big advocate of the shuttle, and I said, you know, we needed to offer it because of housing values. And of course, we need to look at our seniors. They've paid their taxes too, just like you've paid your taxes when you had your children, not in school, in school, and now you're an empty nester. So, you know, we have to look at those issues, but I'm glad Mr. Paglisi was able to do. But Anthony, is there any, like, any flyers or signs or things that we can get to the senior complexes? Because a lot of our seniors don't have access or they don't know how to use the Internet. Is there any, like, you know, handouts or signage that we can have in our senior citizen facilities and get to them so they can know how to contact?
I can get that.
Okay.
At least contact Patty Duffy in charge of senior services.
They are aware of that.
They're aware of it.
They are aware of accessibility. This is beyond that. So it's not going to be universal. There are several people really need it, so it depends on the budget. There are some issues with the town bus. They pick up at a certain time and they have to relax.
We'll look into that, Rose. Thank you. It's good for you to bring that out. With the budget issue, you know, I do budgets, you know, and Marielle knows that I do them. We do, and sometimes you have these pulls, these taking pulls on doing a budget, how you do it, how you don't, and the best practices. Because you don't have to look at either zero-based budgeting, does it work, does it doesn't work, but controls. The key issue is our controls, you know, review, follow-up valuation, and the control of our spending. And, you know, I believe we have good, you know, systems and practices in place to control and watch for any wastefulness. When you look at other townships, though, and we've had this conversation, every town has a different scenario, has a different best practice. Every township is different. Some townships have a newer infrastructure, some townships have an older infrastructure, some townships have a paid fire department, some townships have a volunteer fire department. So we have to look at it. So yeah, it's a good idea to talk to other townships and see and get together, but sometimes you have to always have to weigh what the major differences are, and it's good. And, you know, you are the budget advisor, and you are here at our budget meetings, and it's good that, you know, we have somebody that really takes it seriously. And yes, us as council members need to make sure that our appointees do participate and not just have it in names. So, thank you, Marielle. Anybody else have any other comments before I close? Okay. Madam Clerk, would you read the consent?
I would have a giant to those questions.
Oh, John, I'm sorry, Mr. Gross, would you like to make comments on the questions that were put to you?
Sure, I'll try to be brief. That's impossible. And Mr. Sayers says that's impossible. In reference to the question, I'm going to just go through the questions one by one. The new user-friendly budget is required and will be available and online once the budget has been adopted by council. This particular year, this is the first year the state's using it. They were late getting it out, and so they promulgated that it would occur at adoption. Next year, it will occur at introduction, so it'll be out there earlier next year. But that will be prepared and it will be on the website certainly this month. In terms of change in taxes or projection, we, I'm not going to tonight project what next year's tax rate is. There are a lot of challenges. There are always a lot of challenges. I've not been, I've not sat in the seat, whether it be here or anywhere else, the year before and said, oh, next year's going to be easy. It's not. But somehow, we've managed to pull through. And then you look at what's happened here in West Orange. There's been a lot of zero increases and two increases, less than 2% over the past five or six years. And so it's happened here. Again, I'm not going to project for next year at this point in time. I think next year will be a challenging year. As we go through and get closer, we'll be able to give you more information as where we think that's, how that's going to approach once we get closer to the end of the year. And a lot of that has to do with the next topic, which, you know, what are the unanticipated costs? What threats do we have? I mean, what are the potential unbalances? And again, this has to do with, that was originally supposed to be in the user-friendly budget, which was to be done, finished, and they've just recently decided that upon adoption, there's two documents, there's a document that will be placed into the budget. So Marielle, you'll be able to see that. That'll be online within the next few days, which will, you know, outline whatever unbalances that we see at this point in time. But on top of that, the next topic of zero-based budgeting, you know, I think anybody that comes to the budget hearings, the public budget hearings, sees this much of the work that goes into presenting to the council. Literally hundreds of hours go into the process. And while there is not a formal zero-based budgeting, I can tell you that in our, Mr. Sayers and my meetings with all the directors and all the departments include a review of every single transaction that they've had in the past three years, not this past year, in the past three years. We review them, and in terms of our recommendations to the mayor as to what the mayor would be recommending to you are based on those reviews. So we're looking at, forget, you know, zero-based, we're looking at first penny and, you know, and through. So I think, and the fact of the matter is, is that we do have a lot of internal controls. We are, we do have surplus. So the internal workings are working out quite well. You just don't see that, the public doesn't see that, because if we were to do that, we would not have a budget weekend. We would have a budget week or perhaps budget month in order to do all of that in front of your eyes and the public's eyes. School costs against a policy issue, but I can tell you that I've seen it in many, many places where, particularly with facilities that are shared use, you know, to the extent that they're being used for township programs as well as school programs. There's, and I think the cooperation between the two bodies here in West Orange is phenomenal and not unusual, but certainly above average, quite frankly. And again, I think that becomes a policy issue for you all. The issue of salary increases of 2%, we completely agree. You know, we've had salary increases across the board with, you know, with contracts of, you know, 0.022 the last go-around. We just settled a contract with 0.1.622 over four years. So in terms of our total salary costs, we're certainly within that 2% and anticipate continuing to be. Surplus policy, we absolutely do have a surplus policy. That policy is in writing, and certainly I can provide a copy of that if Marielle, if you'd like a copy. But the bottom line to our surplus policy is that our goal is to only allocate as much surplus in the coming budget as we raised the previous year. And that will maintain our surplus. And sometimes we're able to do that, sometimes we're not able to do that. This year, we are. And so, you know, and I think overall and average, since I've been here, we have been. So been adhering to that policy. As far as the money being listed in the resolutions and the access to all the documents online, we'll take a look at that and see if there's something. You know, as far as I know, everything is there and available and downloadable and readable. From time to time, that does occur, that we put something up and it's not read, you know, easily readable. But we'll take a look at that to make sure that in the future, that it is there. And so I'll urge the public to be relentless in looking, and I think you'll find it there. And it's, you know, it's on the same line. So I think, I think that we're doing a pretty good job with that as far as access. The only thing I didn't address was the Citizen Board, and I think that's already been addressed, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gross. Okay. Madam Clerk, if you view the consent agenda, please?
Approval of previous, I'm sorry, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting April 28th, 2015.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions. The administration asked that I pull Resolution 135-15, which is Resolution to amend introduced 2015 municipal budget, as well as Resolution 137-15, Resolution to adopt the 2015 municipal budget. Other than that, are any other resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilman Cerro?
No, my questions are pertaining to the budget, Council President, so I'll just direct them to the administration before the next meeting. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Thank you. I'd like to pull Agenda Item B, Resolution 129-15, Resolution authorizing execution of First Amendment to lease agreement with Hans Inc. Also like to pull Agenda Item M, Resolution 140-15, Resolution authorizing an additional appropriation and expenditure in the amount of $1,000 to suburban consulting engineers. And also just had a couple of questions on other, a couple of the other issues. And I don't know whether to ask them now, or maybe I wait until, see if anybody else is pulling them.
You can ask them now, Council.
Okay, sounds good. On Agenda Item A, Resolution 128-15, Resolution authorizing execution of license agreement for use of pool facilities by Montclair YMCA, and it was referenced earlier by Ms. Morelli. I had a question because whenever we get contracts that are either renewals or amendments, I ask the administration for information about whatever has changed from the previous contract. That, of course, allows me to look over things a lot quicker instead of having to go through an entire document. Some of these are many pages long to try to find the changes. And I just noted in, in this instance, I asked for that, I didn't get that, but I did notice that among the changes. And I just want to emphasize this, it's so much, so helpful. I don't know if it's helpful for the rest of you to get, when we have contracts that are either renewals or amendments, if there are any changes. And I know we've done it in the past, and I've been told when there are no changes. In these cases, there were changes in two of them tonight, but the lawyer that prepared and made the changes did not give me the changes and said instead in his email that the, that the changes were self-evident. And I don't think that's the way to go. I think if there are changes made in the contract, we should get a red-line version showing them, and if not, then a detailed explanation of what were the changes.
I have a quick question. Did the councilmen give both contracts, last year and this year's?
I believe so.
Yeah, I thought that Mr. Duffy asked-
I believe so.
...to submit both contracts to the council.
Yes, I just-
You got both contracts, correct?
He's just saying that I liked it too.
So you're saying, when you read them, you weren't able to decipher what the difference was between '14 and '15. You want us to red-line those for you now, from '14 to '15?
One of our, one of our major responsibilities as a council is to review all contracts. It's just easier for us if whoever changes the contract or amends them, if they would just tell us what the changes are, instead of, as you pointed out, having to go through both contracts to see what's changed.
Okay. We can discuss that with them.
And oftentimes, when there aren't any changes, that's what I get back in my response.
No, I'll discuss that with them.
Okay. The contract here, I noticed one change, which is that it made a change in how the payment is delivered by Montclair YMCA. And I'm just wondering if that indicates that we're having problems getting timely payments from them in the past because it changed this year?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any, any issue. From my, from the receiver of the funds, I'm not aware of any, any issues of delinquency.
Okay. Do you know why that, the change was made in the contract?
I did not.
And I do not either.
I, you know, I did not, you're absolutely right, Council. Normally, if I, if I know the specific- if I know the specifics of a contract, I'll tell you, yes, it's changed, nothing's changed. This particular one, when we got it back from, from legal counsel, we got copies of last year's and this year's that we sent to you, and they said to look them over. So, I didn't, I didn't characterize them in any way. I wasn't involved in the negotiation of them. So, I suspect it was just maybe some best practice that they're implementing. Because again, I had, I am not aware of any particular issue.
Okay. Could, could you ask Mr. Duffy to actually, you know, explain why that change was made, and if there are any other changes in the contract that I missed? If he could just point that out to me, it's just, it would be very helpful. Thank you. Just, I had a question on Agenda Item I, 136-15, the Resolution authorizing appropriation cancellation pursuant. This is a little bit inside baseball, but it's a large amount of money. So, I just wanted to just ask a quick question. This is a cancellation of, I think, about $365,000 in a surplus for, if I'm not describing it correctly, please, please correct me, but it was for severance payments from last year. We weren't sure how much it was. So, if I recall correctly, we set aside $1 million, and now we're canceling roughly $365,000. So, does that mean that our severance payments actually turned out a little bit better than we expected, but it was roughly 600 and maybe 50? I've got the numbers somewhere, but I don't have them in front of me at the moment.
To cut to the chase on that, I'd say the answer is no. It's not that our exposure is different. I mean, we estimated a little, a little higher, and we've always done that in most years, so that we have carryover. This reflects a change in policy, if you will, from the division, that they're, they're basically saying, whatever you approve has to be used within the year that you approved in. So, therefore, we couldn't use that, any leftover money for the 2015 year, which is what we have done historically. If there's something left over from '13, we used it in '14. This is just a change in policy.
Okay. But are the numbers roughly correct, from what I was saying, is that?
346?
Yes. The answer is yes.
Here it is. Yes, 346,000 was canceled. So, that means we had about, severance costs about 654,000. Okay. Thank you.
We actually had more than that, but we had monies left over from '13. So, it, you know, they didn't, the decision didn't impact that. So, it was probably closer to 800,000 for the year. But again, since we had, we had surplus from '13 that we used, the amount that we used from the '14 authorization went down.
Okay. Thank you. That's, those are my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Spango?
I'm good, Council President.
Okay. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you.
And, nothing. Madam Clerk?
So, with the exception of Resolutions B, H, J, and N, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Resolution B was pulled by Councilwoman Krokoviek, Resolution authorizing execution of First Amendment to lease agreement with Hands, Inc.
Yes, thank you. I just want to get my notes up here. Bear with me. This was, this was the other resolution I was referencing, where I asked for changes and, and didn't get any. So, I would, you know, after this meeting, perhaps ask Mr. Duffy. This is a resolution that will amend a lease agreement for a property that we lease at 55, 555 Valley Street. It's the current, but soon to not be, the home of the Police Traffic Bureau, and it's going to be moving, I assume, sometime, sometime this year.
Probably within the next month.
Okay. And so, what we're doing is, we are amending the lease agreement, and, so I basically have two questions. The first question has to do with, we are changing the lease and are going to give the, if I understand correctly, the use of that property, I think it's about 1,300 square feet.
Correct.
To, to the West Orange Arts Council.
Correct.
So, I'm just wondering why the administration has decided to essentially pay the rent for, the West Orange Arts Council, for the next, I don't know what the exact number is, I think the next 15 years. Why the decision was made to do that?
They had, excuse me, the Arts Council had come to us and asked for a place that they wanted to utilize. We were moving the police substation into the gas station, and we had sat with some members of the Arts Council. They're actually contributing $300 a month to the rent. When, in fact, we were going to make that move, the owners of the property, which is Hands, Mr. Patrick Marcy, said they wanted to renegotiate the lease. And once we were moving out, legal felt that we would have to renegotiate the lease. So, we had to renegotiate the lease, and we got the best price we could get to house the Arts Council in there, because it's in the middle of the Arts District.
So, I read over the contract, and while I, I didn't reel over it in several times, which is what I'd like to do, the contract that I don't recall, there's a, I don't recall that there is a clause that says if the Police Bureau moves out, that we have to...
No, there isn't. But Mr. Marcy had come to us and met with us, and said that there was no way they could continue renting the space out for $300 a month. Part of the original, I don't know if you were aware of this, Councilman, I don't even know, you may not have been on the council back then. But part of the original agreement that we made with them to use that property, prior to putting the police substation in the gas station, we had, the township actually purchased that gas station for a dollar, from the owner. There were some environmental problems. We had gotten a grant to fix the environmental issues. Part of the agreement, even though it's not written in the agreement, but it was a gentleman's agreement, that once that, that property was, was cleaned, they were going to utilize that property for, I forget what they were going to, I'm not sure, Lenny, I think they said they were going to use it to.
Park?
Put something else in there, and they were going to rent it out. Unfortunately, once we cleaned the property, there were some other issues with the property that we couldn't turn the property over to them, and that's why we decided to move the substation into there. So, part of the initial agreement was, they were going to get another piece of property for $300 a month. That didn't happen. So, by virtue of the fact that that never happened, when the Arts Council asked to go into the property, Mr. Marcy said, "Hey, you know, we're taking the beat, not just for $300 a month. You got, we're going to have to raise the rent." So, we negotiated an agreement with them.
So, that's the first, first question. Issue is why the township feels it's necessary to give the West Orange Arts Council this, this property with such a heavy subsidy from the taxpayers. But the other issue is, if I've done the math correctly, it looks like, from the lease that exists now, at $300 a month, through the year 2019, and then there's an extension on the original contract for another five years at a higher rate, over the life of this revised contract, we will be spending 160, more than $160,000 through the year 2024 in, in the rent payments, which is $40,000, almost $41,000, or 34% more than what we would be paying under the current lease agreement.
Over 15 years.
I, I think it's nine years.
Actually, you're right. I'm sorry. Nine years. So, it was originally 15.
That's correct.
Over nine. You're right. So, it's over nine years.
So, when I started out saying, you know, there's two different issues, why, why should we be subsidizing this office space for a nonprofit? That's one question. But then the second question is, why do we work out a lease where we're paying 34% more than under a valid lease that we have right now? And it amounts to, you know, like I said, more than 41, or almost $41,000, if I've done the math correctly. I don't, I don't understand, if we want to do them a favor, we could actually just give them the lease now and let them negotiate with, with the landlord, or we could stick with the, with...
We can't, I don't think we can give them the lease. I think in the agreement, it says it's not, it's not assignable. So, we couldn't assign it to them.
No, I'm saying, we should either continue this under the current lease, which gives us another four years at, at $300 a month. And then it raises it at the extension, if we want to do the extension, we don't even need to do the extension. That would save us a ton of money.
But the additional, if you add the additional $300 a month being paid by the Arts Council, that $40,000 basically evens out to what we would have normally been paying. So, that was kind of the agreement, that we didn't want to, even though Mr. Marcy and Hands needed additional monies for the property, we tried to balance it out, because they really want the property. They want to utilize it. They want to have, you know, programming there for children and all kinds of other stuff, so.
And of course, that's fine. And, but the way that, that the law is structured, if we have a valid lease, we don't have to pay them more money.
You're absolutely correct. We do not have to pay them more money. I don't disagree with that. But if you do the numbers and add in the $300 a month that they're going to pay us for rent, basically balances out. It's about maybe $6,000, $8,000 more over the nine-year period, rather than 40.
Well, I haven't done the math on your calculations. I'm just looking at these numbers.
Well, it's, it's $300 a month, comes to $3,600 a year, times nine years, comes to what?
Thirty...
Thirty-two.
Thirty, thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, four from 40,000 would leave you $7,600 more over the nine-year period. So, that's the difference. We actually tried to get more, but they couldn't pay more than $300 a month.
And is that going to result in a separate lease agreement or sublease agreement with the West Orange Arts Council?
I'm not sure. That would be a question for legal, because we're not ready to make the move yet. So, you know, by the end of the month, we, I think probably by the end of the month, they're saying we should be in the new substation. There's a couple of other things that need to be done. Actually, I need to speak to Mr. Lapore about that.
I just think that this is not something that we should be spending all of this money on. So, I just wanted to bring this up and throw it out to my colleagues. But it's a lot of money that we don't have to pay. And I, particularly with the fact that we're raising taxes in the budget this year and going forward, I don't think this is a wise use of our limited funds. So, I just wanted to bring this up.
Okay.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 129-15?
Who shall move?
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviek?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to do the budget one, or do you want to do the budget? BM, okay. Okay. Councilman Krokoviek pulled Resolution 140-15, Resolution authorizing an additional appropriation and expenditure in the amount of $1,000 to suburban consulting engineers.
Yes, thank you. And I see Mr. Lapore here, but I don't feel like it's necessary for you to come up and talk about the project. It's just another situation where we have, we, meaning the administration, has spent money and then come to the council to approve it retro, this, the expenditure retroactively. So, I'm just, I just pulled it so that I could vote against it, but I don't have to, I don't have to hear unless anybody else wants, wants to do this. I just, again, I just feel like one of our jobs as the council is to review expenditures. And if you come to the, to the council for approval, after you've spent the money and after the work's been done, then there's no sense, and there's no control over it. So, I just try not to vote for these, for these resolutions.
Is there a motion to?
I just, that's a discussion now, but I mean, that kind of discussion about, and then not voting for it when it already happened, doesn't make sense to me. And Lenny has explained to us, when this does happen, they are out in the field. This is, this particular one is drainage on Winding Way, I think. We've had this conversation. And it, and it happens. And, and the work needed to get done. So, I trust Lenny's judgment in these type of situations, when it's $1,000 that, again, the work needed to get done at that particular time.
Anybody else have any comments, or to this, any comments? Administration have any comments about, on this report? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 140-15?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviek?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 135-15, Resolution to amend introduced 2015 municipal budget.
Good evening. It's that time of year again. The law requires, when there's an amendment to a budget which has been introduced, that it has to be read in its entirety into the record. So, I'm going to read to you the resolution that's been presented to you as quickly as I possibly can. I want you, I want you to take note, this is a short amendment.
So, please proceed, Mr. Gross.
Whereas the local municipal budget of the year, the year 2015 was approved on the 24th day of March, 2015, and whereas the public hearing of said budget was held and advertised, and whereas a desire to further amend said budget, now therefore be it resolved by the governing body, the Township of West Orange, of County of Essex, that the following amendments be approved budget, of the approved budget 2015 be made. General revenues, miscellaneous revenues, Section B state aid without offsetting appropriations. Consolidated municipal property tax relief aid from $4,199.50 to zero. Energy receipts tax from $4,478.017 to $4,691.252. Supplemental energy tax receipts from $196,437 to zero. Total Section B state aid without offsetting appropriations from $4,683.87050 to $4,696.469. Miscellaneous revenues, Section F special items of general revenues anticipated with prior consent of the Director of the Local Government Services. Public and private revenues offset with appropriation. CLG grant from 0 to $12,548. New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act from 0 to $226,000. Recycling tonnage grant from 0 to $126,404.18. Drunk driving enforcement fund from 0 to $3,975. Clean community program from 126,404.18 to zero. Essex County Division on Aging Title III Older Americans Act from $17,171 to $16,127. County of Essex Delinquency Prevention Grant from 0 to $18,563. Total Section F special items of general revenues anticipated with prior consent of the Director of Local Government Services. Public and private revenues, prior written consent of Director of Local Government Services. Other special items from $668,564.50 to $928,606.50. Reserved to pay debt service from $134,739.15 to zero. Total Section G special items of general revenue with special, prior consent, prior consent of the Director of Local Government Services. Other special items from $2,541.049.06 to $2,406.0991. Summary revenues, miscellaneous revenues, total Section B state aid without, $4,683.870.50 to $4,696.469 even. Total Section F special items of general revenues anticipated with prior consent of the Director of Local Government Services. Public and private revenues offset with appropriation from $668,564.50 to $928,606.50. Total Section G special items of general revenues anticipated with the prior consent of the Director of Local Government Services. Other special items from $2,541.049.06 to $2,406.309.91. Total miscellaneous revenues from $15,855.9796.25 to $15,993.697.60. Receipts from delinquent taxes from $2,135.839.23 to $2,347.622.49. Total subtotal, I'm sorry, subtotal general revenues, items 1, 2, 3, and 4 from $20,889.937.60 to $21,239.622.21. Total general revenues from $73,754.680.86 to $74,104.365.47. That's, that's revenue changes. General appropriations, operations within caps, central, central insurance, employee group health, from $9,779.12 to $10,066.539.12. Total Department of Administration and Administration and Finance, from $12,030.795.79 to... Total Department of Administration and Administration and Finance from $12,030.795.79 to, I'm sorry, from $13,008.795.79 to $13,376.434.79. Department of Fire, Division of Fire, salaries and wages from $8,712.258.18 to $8,774.900.80. Total Division of Fire from $8,896.388.19 to $9,049.030.80. Total operations within caps, $51 million, from $51,101.654.66 to $51,459.936.27. Within caps, from $51,102.64.66 to $51,469.36.27. Details, salary and wages from $29,202.902.02 to $29,271.544.63. Other expenses, including contingent, from $21,893.752.64 to $22,189.391.64. Deferred charges statutory mandatory within caps, statutory public employees retirement system from $973,896.00 to $975,896.00. Total deferred charges and statutory from $5,902.223.71 to $5,904.233.71. Purposes within caps, $57,004.888.37 to $57.365.169.98. Oper, no, not done yet. Operations excluded from caps, insurance, employee group health from $295,693.00 to zero. Total other operations excluded from caps, from $5,644.53.21 to $5,344.812.21. Public and private offsets by revenues, Office of County of Aging Title III Older Americans Act from $17,171.00 to $16,127.00. County of Essex Delinquency Prevention Grant from zero to $18,563. CLG grant from zero, I'm sorry, COB grant from zero to $12,548. Drunk driving enforcement fund from zero to $3,975. Total public and private program offset by revenue from $693.678.50 to $727.720.50. Total operations excluded from cap from $6,349.624.17 to $6,088.027.17. Details, salary and wages, twenty, detail, and salary and wages, $27,808.93 to $30,739.93. Other expenses from $6,321.815.24 to $6,057.287.24. Capital improvement fund from $250,000 to $275,000. New Jersey, New Jersey DOT Trust Fund Authority Act, miscellaneous streets from zero to $226,000. Total capital improvements excluded from caps from $250,000 to $501,000. Total general revenues excluded from, from cap, from $13,862.734.50 to $13,852.137.50. Total general appropriations excluded from caps, once again, $13,682.734.50 to $13,852.137.50. Total general appropriations from $70,867.622.87 to $71,217.307.48. Summary of appropriation from $73,754.680.86 to $74,104.365.47. Total general appropriations for missile purposes within caps from $57.004.888.37 to $57.365.169.98. Operations excluded from caps, other operations from $5,644.53.21 to $5,344.814.21. Additional appropriations offset by revenues, public and private offset by revenues, $693,000 to $678.50, $727,720.20 and 50. Total operations excluded from caps from $6,349.624.17 to $6,088.027.17. We're in the, we're almost there. Total capital improvements from $250,000 to $501,000. Total general appropriations from $73,754.680.86 to $74,104.365.47. Be it further resolved, the three certified copies of this resolution shall be filed forthwith with the Office of the Director of Local Government Services for his certification of the local municipal budget so amended.
Very good.
Now somebody has to introduce it, or has to.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 135-15?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman, oh, Councilwoman Spango stepped away. Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Thank you. Very well presented, Mr. Gross. Next, we'll have a computer will just read. Madam Clerk?
One second, okay. Resolution 137-15, Resolution to adopt the 2015 municipal budget.
Council President, I had mentioned at the last council meeting that I wanted to bring up a few issues before we actually voted on the budget. I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I do, before we have a final vote on the, on the budget, I do want to raise some issues.
Councilman would like to ask some questions on the budget being introduced. Councilman?
Thank you. Mr. Gross, just a couple of questions about the changes that you just read in, because I just want to make sure I understand what's going on. There was a change on the reserve to pay debt service from $134,000, almost $135,000 to zero, and I, I asked you the question, you know, in our back and forth, but I'm not sure if I understand it correctly. It seems to me it's a good, it's a good thing to keep a reserve to pay debt service because you don't want to not have money to pay debt when it comes due, but this zeros out that reserve. And I'm just trying to find out, did we zero out the reserve because we're, we have the funds in hand and we don't need to keep a reserve?
When you read, when you read these titles, which are titles that are created by statute, a common interpretation of that title would be exactly what you, how you have interpreted it. That is not what's going on here. We, when we receive funds, for instance, let's say from, from another source that is dedicated to pay down debt service, it goes into a fund called Reserve for Debt Service. And then, then, then once we receive that, then we can anticipate that as revenue into our budget. We have historically done that, and we've had monies. Now, this will be the second year in a row where we have adopted our budget very early, and certainly introducing, and the monies that we, that I was anticipating that would be, would be in by now that I could use as, as a revenue haven't come in yet. That'll actually be in at the end of this month. So since we're adopting now early, I had to take that back out. It's not that the funds, not that we're depleting the reserve, the reserve doesn't exist as of right now. The reserve will exist in about two weeks, but we're adopting tonight, so I have to take it out.
Okay. The other question I had was the, the change in the capital improvements, the down payments, it's gone from $250 here to $501,000. And I'm just wondering if that reflects a change in our anticipated capital expenditures or what, what that change?
No, the, the change from $250 to $501 includes an increase of $25,000 in the capital improvement fund, and then $226,000, which is a grant, a capital grant that we're, that we're receiving. So the, the, that, that's the total from $250 to, to $501. The, but the capital improvement fund is actually increasing by $25,000, which we do, it, that, that increase, we were requesting and in order to fund the bond ordinance that's on for introduction tonight.
Okay. And, and the balance of that is from, I guess, a state, a state?
Yeah, it's the DOT, the DOT grant.
Okay. Thank you, that's, that's all I had there. I just wanted to raise some issues that I've, I've raised previously, but I just figured this is the last chance to, to bring them up. One of the things I had mentioned back at the February budget hearings is that I wanted to try to get the council to consider whether we have a change in policy about our sewer assessment, and to change it from not really a random fee, but a fee that, that tries to sort of anticipate what our increased costs are and tries to even out over a period of years. At least that's the way I interpret it. I'm sure there's a more sophisticated explanation from the administration. But what I wanted to do is ask the council if they will consider adopting a policy that has the fee changing annually to reflect our costs. And while that generally would likely mean that the costs go up year to year, what that would actually do is get a greater contribution in revenue to the, to the town from the fact that the sewer assessment is a fee assessed per connection to the, to the system and not based upon part of your property taxes. And so what would happen is that if, if the fee did go up, what would happen is that we would pull in more revenue from the nonprofits and thus actually help the taxpayers by not having to subsidize our annual costs quite as much. And I know we have missed the window to do that this year, and that's my fault, I should have been whining or screaming about it earlier. But I, I just wanted to put this on everyone's agenda because I'd like to address this issue later on this year before we get into next year's budget about whether we want to do this. So I just wanted to flag that, because it's too late to do this, we're already collecting the sewer fees. I also did want to bring up again the potential to increase the hours of our parking enforcement officer. The officer currently works 25 hours a week at $15.20 an hour, and I, I'm confident, and I, I think the administration is confident, that if we got the officer to work more hours, he could generate more, more revenue to the township from additional enforcement actions. And it might also allow him to be a little bit more flexible in his, in the routes that he takes on a regular basis. And I've seen the impact of, of, of the officer changing his routine and going into neighborhoods where he doesn't normally go and finding a lot of violations. And while I don't want to penalize our residents who are already facing difficulties with, with, with limited parking in, in certain neighborhoods, it would perhaps even help them by preventing illegal parking that, that the officer could do. It would generate more revenue for the township even after paying the additional costs of the officer, and then it would also, I think, improve overall the parking situation throughout the township if we could get him to continue to vary his routine with additional, with additional changes to his routine. So I wanted to suggest this as a revenue item for us to vote on. I would like to ask for discussion if there's any, and if not, I'd like to just make a motion to increase the hours of the parking enforcement officer from 25 hours a week to perhaps 30 or 35.
Any of my colleagues?
We've had this discussion about the sewer bill during every budget hearing, and the reason the sewer bill is separate and not part of our taxes is to do exactly that, to capture all of those tax-exempt users. We have always discussed not increasing that every year. It does make sense that we do get that substantial increase, but I think it's a discussion that we have every year during our budget hearing to increase that sewer bill or not. Again, we can't do it now, but it's one, it's a discussion that we can have again when it comes up, but I, it's always been that we choose not to raise the rate every year.
Until we have to, and we were in a situation this past year where we raised it considerably, I don't know what is 30 or 40 percent, from take 180 to 250, but even at 250, that's not covering our costs. And so what's essentially happening is the taxpayers wind up subsidizing the difference between what our assessment doesn't bring up, and, and I'm just thinking it's probably better off for our taxpayers if we, if we address this. And I'd like to just address it later on this year before we get into, before we get into the budget so that the administration could, could be prepared and we could discuss whether to do that or not.
The other discussion about the parking enforcement officer that just came up as one of our ordinances, that I believe we can't increase the hours of the officer that's assigned, and we, I did not, but we approved a, a Department of Public Works officer to pick up some of that work, so I don't know if that, for your, to your point, if the Department of Public Works person can do, see, you know, it was a conversation about the enforcement, to make it more sustainable.
The enforcement, they're two different issues. The, the, the physical maintenance of, and, and the collection of funds from our parking meters is separate apart from the?
The enforcement.
The enforcement, and the person who does the, the enforcement, I, I think there was some suggestion at some point in time that person could also do some maintenance of the, the meters, which we don't think was, was a good use of his time. The converse is not true. The person who does the, the, the maintenance of the meters cannot do parking enforcement.
Right. Not, not long.
Yes, I'm, I'm not talking about anything having to do with maintenance, I'm just talking about parking enforcement, and I, I recall earlier this year that I asked the administration whether there were any restrictions on how many hours, weekly hours, the officer could work, because I thought that the officer might have been under some restrictions because he was getting?
Retiring.
Yeah, he's retiring, getting payments from the state pension.
There, there, there are no, there's, there are restrictions in terms of, at some point in time, our costs would go up dramatically if a person became, for instance, a full-time employee. However, there, there is some more hours this particular individual could work, or another, could hire somebody different if, if council wanted to put more money in that. But let me speak to the issue of that. Number one, if you would like to further amend this budget, I will have to prepare, you know, an amendment, the likes of, that I just read, which, which whatever lines that any increase or change would impact, so it is not something that we could do tonight.
I think what we're discussing right now doesn't amend this in any way, but I do have?
Well, the councilman is, was, was going to offer an amendment, or a resolution to do an amendment.
We were interested in making an amendment.
And, and what I, the first thing I want to say is, is that, I mean, I suppose if you wanted to recess the meeting and send me back to my office to prepare an amendment in an hour or so, I'd be back with, with an amendment that you could read into the record. That's number one. Number two, the other side of it is, is if you do, if you do propose an amendment to increase the appropriation, that is going to increase the amount to be raised by taxation. So you should be aware that you would be over, that right now, the, the increase is at exactly 2 percent. If you were to increase by whatever amount it is, that the, there would be an increase in, in the amount to be raised by taxation.
And that wouldn't be offset by the anticipation of additional revenues from the actual additional tickets that, that he would write?
You cannot anticipate revenue that you never have any experience on. So we've, we've, we're already maxed out as to the revenue that we can take from tickets. I mean, you know, now, would that cause revenue, in theory, additional revenue next year? Yes. But that, that would then, that would be, impact the 2016 budget, not the 2015 budget.
So John, since, you said before that since we're adopting this early, I'm noticing on the Clean Communities Program that that went from $126,000 to zero. Are we still anticipating that to come, so this would still have to be amended if more revenue comes in, that one in particular?
Two things, that particular one happened to be a typo. If you'll see, there's an in and out, the same, right, it was, it just went to the wrong line, so that, that's just a correction. But we do anticipate monies from Clean Communities.
No, well, one is recycling tonnage, there's two separate. Recycling tonnage is different than the Clean Communities Grant.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, the, 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 we had just put it to the wrong line.
So are we not, we're not? So are we not, we're not expecting anything from Clean Communities?
I can't anticipate it until it's awarded. And so therefore, since, at the time this was prepared, it had not been awarded.
It has not been received.
There was an email that was sent out where they were awarded, I just don't know what the amount is. They were awarded today.
So we'll come back
It's still going to be amended.
Well, we don't have to amend, that's chapter 159, we come back with a special resolution for that.
Okay.
It's a process.
And hopefully there are more out there.
Yep.
Yep.
I sent one out today for environmental, another one that we got.
Great.
So Mr. Gross, I understand the additional paperwork that might be done here. Perhaps we hold an abeyance to my motion to do this, because I'd like to raise another issue that would actually reduce the expenditures this year, and putting the two together might solve the problem with perhaps zeroing out any sort of changes.
We've had these discussions, that's what we had our budget meetings and our hearings for. So why are they coming up now? These issues that should have been brought to us during our February meeting or January meetings, why aren't they
What did I miss? Wait, I'm sorry, what did I miss that is the revenue generator, that you're suggesting that this needs to be amended?
The parking enforcement officer, if he works more hours, will write more tickets, and that will generate the additional revenue.
We did have that discussion in our
We had that discussion.
Budget hearing.
I'm just, I'm bringing it up again because we're about to close the budget on 2015, and I think these things make a lot of sense to me. If they're not going to be approved, I don't want to waste everybody's time, but I did just want to bring it up again. The other issue I have is we voted in February to give $25,000 to the Mountaintop League and the PAL for uniforms for the new revised structure of recreational athletics, youth athletics.
For baseball.
And we are already giving these two guys more than $20,000. We've been doing that for a few years, at least the years that I've been on the council. And then in addition to this, we wanted, we voted, the majority voted to give $25,000 for the uniforms. I'm suggesting that perhaps to address the issue of the additional appropriation that would be required to increase the hours of the parking enforcement officer, we knock back this $25,000 allocation and use the difference to zero out the budget, whatever the difference would be in the cost of the parking enforcement officer.
It's not going to add up to zero out the budget, $25,000 is, and I can't imagine that the parking enforcement officer is going to generate enough. And again, it's anticipated, it's just a projection, we don't know what that number could be. It's not, as much as we would like to zero this out, it's not going to be, what do we need?
The revenues, the revenues that the parking enforcement officer would generate this year can't go into the budget because we can't anticipate. But what does, as Mr. Gross pointed out, it's an appropriation that would increase the expenditure and all things being, everything else being the same, it would put us over the 2% levy tax cap. So what I'm saying is that instead of doing that, because that doesn't, you know, we can't do that, let's knock back that grant to cover the expenditure that we would have for the officer this year and start generating the revenue this year. Even though we can't show it on the budget, we would be able to do that. And let the MTL and PAL use some of the money that we give them ordinarily, that more than $20,000, to make the purchases of the uniforms as they see fit.
If I can interject this real quickly, the money that we've given at Mountaintop, we've given to them for over 20-something years, because when I was a treasurer at Mountaintop all the way back, they've always gotten money, they've gotten the 9,500, and PAL got their 12,000. That money, councilman, is used to offset the insurance cost, increasing insurance cost, and registration fees. Because a lot of the children that use Mountaintop and use PAL, you know, their parents are struggling, just like every other parent is struggling, we're just trying to keep the expenses down for them. So that, those funds there basically enable those two organizations to offer the programs that have reduced expense. And, you know, so the 25 for the uniforms, that's because of merged programs, which would be a cost savings in the long run for both organizations because of merging the two programs. So, you know, I can understand adding a police, you know, enforcement officer, but how do we know how much he's really going to generate in tickets for whatever additional hours we give him? We don't know. It's an if that, and I know what you're saying. It's an expenditure now, and the revenues will be coming in, but we can't project those revenues because the budget's been approved already. But I can't see taking away from Mountaintop and PAL. You know, I mean, these are organizations that benefit the community, and we're enabling the children of West Orange whose parents really are finding it hard, just like any other taxpayer, we're enabling them to have an opportunity to do baseball, soccer, basketball, lacrosse, and ice hockey, you know, with a reasonable fee. And that's what we do.
I'm not advocating that we take away the money, I was just pointing out, we're already giving them over $21,000 a year. What I'm saying is that we're proposing to give them, in addition to that, another $25,000 a year, once, just a one-time payment. And as you rightly point out, I should have made this point earlier, in combining the two organizations, there are efficiencies, and there's probably reduced costs. So perhaps we could take that into account, and instead of giving them $25,000, we give them $15,000. And then use the additional to hire, not to hire, but to give the parking enforcement officer another five hours a week or so, and then to start generating additional revenue for us.
All right, the councilman made a proposal about the
Can I have a question?
Yes, yes, councilman, I'm sorry.
Councilman, clarify this for me. Are you saying to hire the parking official for more hours, use, to take money from the $25,000 from Mountaintop to pay him? Is that my understanding?
Yes, what I, I raised the issue about hiring the parking enforcement, not hiring, I keep saying, I misspeak.
Additional hours.
Additional hours. And then Mr. Gross points out that if we do that, it's an appropriation, it will put us over the 2% tax levy cap. And so we can't do that. So I was suggesting that perhaps whatever the appropriation this year to, for another five hours a week for the parking enforcement officer for half a year, that we take that money from the $25,000 one-time grant that we're going to give to the MTL and PAL for uniforms. Not eliminate it, just figure out what the difference is. So for example, if the cost of hiring the officer for another five hours is $5,000 a year, then take that $5,000 from the grant, instead of giving them $25,000 for uniforms, we give them 20,000. That's what I'm suggesting, that way we can start generating the revenue, we can't show it, but we know it will generate revenue. But to your point, council president, I think we can't know 100% sure how much additional revenue that we would generate from having the parking enforcement officer work more. We can certainly expect that he will write more tickets and probably generate more revenue, but we can't put it into the budget anyway. But it would give us, if we do this now, it would give us six months of experience so that we could put that in, in next year's budget.
Well, you're correct, because you're dealing with an unknown, and who knows? It could, it could make money for the town and be in the 2016 budget, it's not going to affect this budget. But at what price? I mean, if we took $5,000, $10,000, $15,000 from Mountaintop League, then the youth, the recreation department is going to, the youth of West Orange is going to pay for it. Because like Councilman Garino said, maybe there's families that they can't afford to pay for their uniforms. So, yes, you want to generate more income, but at what price? I mean, that, I think, is what you decide.
I'd like to move this forward, I mean, the councilman has made a proposal for amendment to the budget. Do any of my colleagues, yes, councilman?
Yeah, what I want to say, council president, is that we do have the resolution on the floor right now, technically. So are we voting on that resolution first, and should we be interested in considering the assemblyman's proposal? Then we would have to vote this down, and then bring it back for amendment. So what I have a suggestion is that we make a motion to
But there's no motion on the floor to adopt yet.
Can I make a motion to adopt a resolution?
Well, the councilman made a motion, I'm not exactly sure of the wording of your motion.
Okay.
But
This is complicated, and I would like some advice if I could get it. It's, go ahead, Mr. Gross, I don't even have to state the question, you're already in
You cannot, at this moment, do an amendment. You could, if the council directed me to prepare one, I could prepare one with certain parameters. So any motion that would come from council to amend this would have to, I would then have to go back and prepare, very similar to what I just read, because that's the process in order to do an amendment. So, you know, you could do a resolution, I suppose, to direct me to do that, I guess, I don't think that would be necessary if the council wanted that done. Having said that, so that, you know, to the, that's the process. So to the extent that you have a motion on the floor of whatever the structure is, you can either continue with that or withdraw it and, you know, finish up your discussion. There's also a, on the agenda, there is a resolution to adopt. So that's, that's what you have before you.
But, council president, with your approval, but we had to make a resolution to introduce, I'm sorry, we had to make a motion to introduce this resolution in order for Mr. Gross to get up there and read this.
That's done, that amendment is done.
Correct, okay, so that's been approved. So now we're working on the official adoption.
Well, we're moving towards the official adoption, councilman.
So, okay, so we would have to go back.
As I said before, you adopt, I'd like you to consider doing something different before you adopt.
Okay, so then, let's, you know, we would make a motion to approve it, and then
Council president, I hate to be practical, but you know, all you need to do is just test the water, you know, you're all been sitting here listening to this conversation, take a straw vote, you know, are you in favor of amending, of telling the controller to go back and redo this or not? And then go forward.
Madam clerk, would you?
If I could, it makes, it makes no sense to put the cart before the horse, we can't actually put an appropriation in until we find a revenue that would support that. I just want to throw out something. I just plugged in an additional five hours a week for the parking enforcement officer, and I just decided on 25 hours, I mean, 25 weeks, just because it's roughly half a year, and that comes out to $1,900 more. So what we're actually talking about would be perhaps cutting the $25,000 grant for uniforms by $2,000 in order to hire a parking enforcement officer who will almost certainly generate more revenue than the cost of his additional hours, and will probably improve traffic compliance within the town. So it's not a huge amount of money, but it's something that has to be done on the revenue side before we get to the appropriation. So what I would suggest, if it's appropriate, to just throw out, if does anybody want to cut a couple of thousand dollars out of this $25,000 grant in order to give more hours to the parking enforcement officer?
Okay.
And if they don't, then, you know, we don't even have to bother with the second one, because it's, there's, I'm not, I'm not, I can't come up with any additional revenue off the top of my head. I mean, I could think of some, but I don't think they'd be approved, and I don't want to waste the rest of the council's time. But I thought this would be a pretty easy decision to make. So the motion that I have, if it's appropriate to make a motion to add parking enforcement officer another five hours a week, that'd be roughly $2,000, I'm sure we can figure out the numbers going forward, and just to see if there's a second and a vote.
I'm not prepared to vote on that, I'm not prepared to take money away from the grant that was already approved for the sports programs. We saw the infusion that we gave to the hockey team and how that just mushroomed. I'm hoping the same happens with this merger. I wouldn't want to do that at this point, but that's not to say we don't pursue, there's still too many unknowns with this parking enforcement officer, because we don't even know if he's available to do these additional hours, and it is something that we could pursue if it means, this position was always supposed to be sustainable. So talking about extra revenue generated and whatever the cost is, was supposed to come out of this fee, so that, I mean, out of the enforcement. So in the future, we certainly can look at that. I'm not prepared to do that now in this budget.
I concur with the councilwoman in saying
I concur.
So I don't know whether we need a vote.
Well, if you don't have a second, there isn't.
Yes, so there's no second?
No, no, it's the same thing, we would need to assess how much revenue comes in per hour and then subtract expenses to get a net, and then figure out whether or not it's worthwhile to cut back on what we've already considered and approved.
Yeah, Mr. Sares, I can't remember, you and I, I think you and I had a discussion earlier this year about the parking enforcement officer, that he more than pays for himself now.
Yes, he does.
And I don't want to put words in my mouth, but I thought you had, you had said that it would likely, that he would generate additional revenue if he worked more hours.
He could, he could generate more, depending on where we had him building.
Right.
He was collecting money from the parking meters, he's not going to generate any.
Right, I'm not talking about that at all, that's councilwoman's, I'm just talking about writing the tickets and that sort of thing.
Thank you, councilman. Madam clerk, we move on to
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 137-15?
I'm sorry, is there going, there's not a second of my motion, right?
No, sir.
Okay, so that fails for lack of a second. I'd like to also raise another issue about the library before we go to this vote. And this is because since 2011, the administration has made the minimum allocation to the library that is not required under law, it is required to make the minimum distribution, but to not make any more. Because we've had, I think, seven or eight years in which our total assessed value in town has fallen, because the fee that we pay, not the fee, but the revenue that we give to the library is directly related to our tax base, we have been slowly, not strangling or starving, but we have reduced the revenue that we give the library to operate every year since 2011, and it amounts, over time, to significant money. This year, it's going down, the payment to the library has gone down 12, it's going down more than $12,000. It's been doing that for the last three or four years, and I think it's cumulatively reduced their revenue from the town over $1,000, over $100,000, which is putting an additional constraint on them. And what's happening is that while we're reducing the revenue to the library, we're actually taking the savings and spending it in the rest of the, in the rest of the budget. So it's not like we're reducing taxes for anyone, we're taking the money that's, that we're not giving to the library, and we're using it elsewhere within the budget.
They statutorily get a specific amount of money from us every year, and that's based on our assessed values. So if the assessed values go down, that money, that amount goes down. If our assessed values go up, that amount of money goes up.
Yes.
And we've always given them exactly what the state statute has required us to give.
Yes, since that's been in place. But the effect has been to reduce the revenues that the library has to operate significantly. And what I wanted to suggest to the council is, before we approve this budget, to, instead of reducing the allocation to the library by more than $12,000 in our budget, that we reverse that and ask the administration to find $12,000 in savings somewhere else in the budget in order to not reduce them. And what that would mean is that we would still give them the minimum, but we wouldn't, but we'd also give them the difference from last year's allocation to them to not essentially make their lives more difficult. So my motion is to add $12,000, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number in front of me, to add $12,000 back to the library that we're essentially reducing. And we can, we can give the library more money if we want to. And in fact, as you remember, Councilman McCartney, because you've been on the council for a long time, we used to give them more than what we, the minimum that we wanted. And this is going back a long time. And I'm just suggesting, at some point, I think we have a responsibility as a council to say, the library is a priority, and we should not continue to reduce the revenues that we give them, because it's, it would be money that's very well spent. So I have the number here from the budget, I'm sorry for, just give me a second.
Counselman?
Can I say something?
Yes, councilman.
I don't understand how that we're having this discussion now. This should have been discussed at the budget hearings. When we sat here and when we went over it, line by line, this is to, tonight is to adopt, I mean, we're not going to reinvent the budget, that was not the idea tonight. We had budget hearings. All of this could have been brought out at the hearings, and it could have went back and forth. And we, I don't, I don't understand.
You're right, councilwoman. You're, you're right, Councilwoman, it was discussed there.
And no disrespect, but I just don't understand, this is, we, we've been through all of this, we sat here for eight hours on a Saturday.
Right.
And we had the library here, and if you disagreed like you are, I mean, you're certainly entitled to that, but that should have been discussed then, I mean, and we did discuss it, we did not give, we decided not to give them what they were asking, you are correct, but now, we've already had the discussion, it's time to adopt the budget. Why are we going to chew our garbage twice?
I'm sorry, chew our garbage twice?
Yeah, you never heard that?
No.
I didn't like talk about the same thing, is what I'm saying.
You know, also, talking to Director Mr. Cuffett, you know, he, he made a presentation at the budget hearing, and I want to relate this, but if he had given the administration the information that he made at the budget presentation months before, the picture could have been different, things could have been looked at different, Councilwoman. And I think we need to move forward, and maybe next year, I'm saying, we do the next year budget, these are things, all your points you brought up are things we need to look at when we're putting the budget together, not at this juncture right now, we need to move forward, and now we need to work and get the information, the data on additional revenues from, you know, police enforcement for tracking, the benefit to the library, and any, any funding for any other organizations that we do, Councilman. And I think that's what we have to look at it, and nobody's taking away from you, and no disrespect, but I think we need to move forward, we have to, we should adopt our budget, and move forward, and then look, and make the, you know, the evaluations and the investigations to see what we can do for next year.
I think the $12,000, I don't know where that number came from, the $12,000 from the library discussion that we did have at the budget hearings, that sounds noble to do $12,000, we certainly, you know, it seems like something we could find, but that's not what the library was asking for, the library was asking for $100,000, so I'm not really sure what that number does, and the discussion was left that the director was going to look at other means and, of ways to generate revenue there, because they have, he has done a tremendous job opening it up to the public, you know, we don't have a community center in town, but we certainly use the library as a community center, and that's, that was where our conversation was, that David was going to look at, find ways to generate revenue.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes, I have a question for the administration and this issue, the structural issue that came out, is the town somehow responsible for some of the costs associated with the rehab?
Yes.
Okay, so there's your $12,000 plus.
It's a lot more than that.
For the year.
That was part of the discussion.
That was a good question.
We are complying with the statutory requirement, a third of a mill of assessed value.
Yes.
And I feel comfortable with that for this year, come next year, we'll look at it again, and we'll reassess that, as the Council President stated, I think we're at the 11th hour here, so, make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'm sorry. Okay, I...
So, there is a motion on the floor by Councilman Kokoviac, is there a second? No second, the motion fails.
Madam Clerk, I, I recommend, I suggest that we move forward and vote on the adoption of the municipal budget.
Okay, is there a motion to...
Motion moot.
Okay.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kokoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinances on second and final reading, 2448-15, and ordinance amending Chapter 25, Sections 51.16 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, revision to the zoning ordinance. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
So, Council President, as you know, this was presented from the Planning Board, recommended by the Planning Board to create the Sustainable Checklist. This is certainly a direction the Planning Board is trying to move into, seeking green standards. Since we can't condition them, we can ask, at least ask the applicant to consider adopting lead and green standards in their applications.
Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close public comment. Any one of my council colleagues who make additional comments on this ordinance?
I spoke too soon.
You spoke too soon.
Sorry.
Did I say something?
No, no, I spoke too soon.
Oh, it's okay, no, no, it's all fine, no, it's fine. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2448-15?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, 2450-15, bond ordinance authorizing various capital improvements in and for the township of West Orange, appropriating $6,298,200, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $5,998,000, 98, I'm sorry, $5,998,280 bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
That concludes the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before I make a motion to adjourn our council meeting, I just like to wish everyone a great week, I would invite you to come to your council meetings, attend, ask your questions, get involved, also, remember to put in your calendar, we said it often, is the, the street fair on June 6, it's going to be a great time, great time for your kids and the family as a whole, and we look forward to seeing you here at our next council meeting, and I make a motion to, yes, Councilman?
Memorial Day ceremony.
Yes, thank you.
Let's talk about that.
Yes, here at, thank you, Councilman.
The 25th.
The 25th, yes.
10 o'clock.
Here at Town Hall at 10 o'clock, our high school ROTC, and Joe Fagan, our town historian, will be making a presentation. It's a wonderful moving service, and it's a great way to show your appreciation of our veterans, past and present. Thank you, Councilman, for the reminder, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion moot.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good night, West Orange, have a great week.